Pages and pages of questions.
I got a lot of questions. I didn't expect we'll get through all of them. It's just kind of like a question bank.
There's three pages.
There's three pages, only single sided though, so it should be pretty easy. My first question is, did being on the council change how you viewed Somerville?
I guess in some ways, I mean, I always, you know, you you serve because you love the city. I knew the city was full of innovative, creative, engaged, committed people. And then you get to see it on such an enormous scale when you're serving an elected office. That that's that's truly incredible and it was really humbling. I think, you know, there are pieces of how the sausage gets made that were, you know, opportunities for education and learning lessons for me. But that didn't change the way I see, you know, the opportunities in the city, the challenges in the city, the ways in which we engage with with each other. I think that's always stayed the same throughout my time on the council.
Is there anything you can think of that you thought about how city government worked? That turned out to be totally wrong, like once you actually got into it and sort of like, oh, wait a minute, I was just, I was misperceiving this.
I think people forewarned me that city government is slow, that change takes time. And that councillors actually have much less power than we we'd like to think we do, and that the public perceives us to have. And and that is hard because I am someone who's impatient. I am someone who is action oriented. I am someone who like wants to see things happen quickly. And for the most part, we can, you know, build good relationships, work on good ordinances, you know, put in solid orders and resolutions for our ward and for our community. And a lot of the day to day decision making just falls in the lap of the mayor, you know, it's a strong mayor form of government.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that was a that was a tough reality to wrestle with because, you know, there there were questions I got from constituents where, you know, ultimately, you know, it just went back to making sure the the city staff member that was in charge of that idea or policy question, got back to the constituent that I, you know, I understood what the what the thinking was and the decision was around it. I helped them understand city government, right? Like that, I see that as my role too, is let me give you insight and empower you to take, you know, matters into your own hands. I think was really important. A good example of that was even things like requesting a speed hump for your street. Of course, there's restrictions with, you know, the construction and and contracting and then, you know, just the way in which we prioritize streets. But there's multiple ways to attack this. So a councillor can put a policy order in and request that mobility take a look at a specific street for a speed hump. And then one way is a citizen, you know, constituent can get gather signatures of people on their street and submit a petition to the mobility team and to the traffic commission to take a look at their street for potential safe streets measures like a speed hump. And so there's multiple ways to attack it. And for some constituents, I tell them, these are all the ways we can attack it. I can take care of one and two. But if you want to, you know, if you want to go at this through a citizen petition, please, by all means. And so, you know, empowering people on this is how the city works and here's how you can take action in your own hands has also, I think, been helpful. I think is one of my roles as a conduit really for that as a city councillor.
Yeah, that makes sense. So is in general, getting your fellow citizens together and saying like, hey, we all agree, we all want this thing. Let's go talk to someone at City Hall. Is that sort of like a good path for getting changes to happen?
Generally, I think that's really important because it shows that there's desire. Being able to show that our neighbors are in full support of this, you're not going to get pushback, right? On installing a speed hump, as an example, is important for city staff to know.
So you said one of the things that surprised you, even though you were warned was how slow city government can be.
Yeah.
Why is it slow? How could it be faster? Can it be faster?
Why is it slow and how can it be faster? I think one, one thing that folks don't know is that so many things that we want to do at the municipal level require a home repetition. And we are stuck by the state house. So frankly, actually municipal government is faster than the state government. Hands down. If if, I mean, we would, we would be well on our way to rent stabilization if it were up to us. We'd be well on our way on so on, on, oh my gosh, so many tenant protections if it was up to us. The the truth is, we are stymied by what we can and can't do without a home repetition.
Okay, home repetition being where we ask the state for an exemption for it to do, have more control locally.
Exactly. The state, our state legislature is notorious for a lack of action. Our state delegation is fantastic, but we need the rest of the state house to agree to let Somerville do things. And that's really challenging, especially because the number of home repositions we set send to the state house is very, very high.
Interesting.
You know, probably us in Cambridge send, you know, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing the most number of home repositions to allow us to do these things like rent stabilization. You know, Mayor Wu attempted it at the, she threw her whole full support behind it. So did the city council, you know, it still got stuck at the state house. Rent stabilization.
So it's not, it's not just, it's not just Somerville that's getting denied.
Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, we all want it. It's a like, like folks came together for a regional, you know, push to the state house to allow our municipalities the option for rent stabilization. It just gets stuck because, you know, state rep, you know, Joe Schmo, I mean, I'm not naming names here in, you know, Franklin County, like, you know, doesn't understand the significance of what that means for renters in Somerville, Cambridge or Boston. So we're stuck and there's a, there are a lot of things we want to do that gets stuck at the state house at home repetition. So I think that's part of it is that is that city government's low partly because we depend on state government. I think the other reason that the perception of that city government is slow is that, you know, there are state law, federal law and city laws that we're, we have to abide by. And there are complex layers underneath that when we want to make changes. And so it takes, you know, some collaborative efforts to to make those things happen. So I think it's slow. I think the perception is also is it slower than sometimes it it is. You know, I, a good example, I hosted a community meeting in my ward about the pit, which people, people call the pit, but it's a potential hotel project. It's been a slow process for a long time. We're now at the point where we're ready to move forward. But there are multiple paths for us to get to where we want to be. One is a potential rezone. Other, there's other paths that we're exploring. There's a meeting about it next week. Potential special permits, variances, et cetera. But a rezone, you know, I was explaining to constituents that because they were frustrated that it does take about three months. But it's not that it takes three months because we're slow. It takes three months because there's a process that we are, we have, we're bound by. And there's scheduling and calendaring pieces in there, right? The city council meets twice a month. Planning board meets when they meet, land use meets when they meet, like, there's a process by which it comes to the council, goes to land use, there's a public hearing, comes back to land use, it goes back, you know, like those pieces. You know, the average citizen doesn't understand all the complexity that goes into rezone. All of those pieces are put together for a reason, so that we don't just hand out permits to any developer that walks into Somerville. But that we're, we do our due diligence for smart development in the city. We have the mobility study, we have the shadow studies, we understand the the impact on the environment and the trees, like all the different elements, right? When we're looking at a rezone, you know, potential negotiations with a developer around community benefits. We saw that with SummerNova, right? So we, we have these pieces in place for a reason. And actually, three months, it's not that bad for a rezone. That's assuming, and I said this to my constituents, that's assuming that there isn't a lot of negative feedback on the current proposal. That's why I hosted that meeting in the first place. It was like, let's get a sense of where folks are at. If if people are like, let's go, let's do this hotel, let's do this at the increased number of stories that the developer wanted. Okay, then a rezone is going to be easier for us to do. But if we get to a public hearing and we have a lot of negative feedback, that brings us back to a place where we have to adjust. So that's a long way to answer the question about pace in the city. You know, I think some of the areas, there are definitely areas for growth, you know, I think, I think there are departments that could be collaborating better together. I think, and I don't necessarily think that's about speed, but more about efficiency and and service to the, to our constituents and to our residents. But but, you know, sometimes I think people bump up against some of those inefficiencies when they're, when they're doing work and I, and I'm really passionate about this because I, I, I don't know if you know this part of my story, but during COVID, I was a contractor with the city. So I I ran a COVID recovery unit in my consultant hat before I became an elected official. Part of why I ran for office because I was so inspired by the work I did. So for 18 months, I, when COVID hit, then Mayor Joe Cerrone, city government was reshifted to the emergency. So every department had got refocused to run a COVID recovery unit. And so, you know, DPW Commissioner was ahead of operations and logistics, right? So it was mostly within their hats they were wearing, but but people, you know, when the libraries closed, right? Like the library staff got refocused to help with, you know, COVID supplies and giving things out, giving out masks and doing COVID tests, that kind of thing. So everyone got kind of reshifted into a COVID recovery unit. And I came in and ran, we didn't have a, we didn't have a director of our immigrant services office at the time. Well, I came in and ran the immigrant services unit. Because what happened was, within a few weeks after everything shut down, there were headlines in the globe that Chelsea in particular, the immigrant population in Chelsea was being the hardest hit by the pandemic. And Mayor Joe said, I don't want that to happen in Somerville. I want to make sure we give our immigrant families and neighbors like the services and resources they need in their language throughout this emergency. So he elevated immigrant services unit to be its own COVID recovery unit. And I came in and ran it and it was the only cross collaborative unit in all of city government. And what I mean by that is it was city staff that I was overseeing as well as community partners. And it was a successful model because it it brought all the people at the same table and we could talk about like, what are the challenges we're seeing? What are the resources that we need? How do we work together better? Because we're all serving the same folks in our city. And and from a customer service perspective, you know, if as a, as a, you know, a member of the immigrant population, maybe English isn't my first language, my English is spotty, I call city government. You know, if I need an application for rental assistance, for food assistance, I need diapers for my child. I need to figure out how to get free school meals for my child. I don't have a hotspot for my child to do Zoom school. Those are five, I've named five phone calls that they would have had to make. What we did is we had one point of contact. So you call one person in any of these departments. And you can walk through all five of those needs and we will fill out the forms for you. We will help to navigate the complexities of all of these different pieces for the family. So you don't have to make five phone calls. And that was a shift really in the way in which city government was working because it used to be, you got to make five phone calls to get all five services. But because we were in the middle of emergency, we sort of did things differently. So I think about that when I think about how we could do things better in the city. I think better collaboration and better coordination with city staff and our community partners in particular is a, is a place that we can go and I'd like to see more of that happen.
You touched on something that I wanted to follow up on, which is you held a meeting to ask your people in your ward how they felt about the idea of rezoning the the pit into a hotel, for example. And you said if they had, if there had been a strongly negative reaction, you would have had to kind of reconsider what to do. Are there times where you would get, you could get a strong negative reaction from the people in your ward and say, this needs to happen for the good of the city anyway? And so despite these concerns, we're going to override that or like, we're going to, we're going to say, you elected us to make decisions. We're going to make a decision for the good of the city and we're going to move forward with this project.
Oh, that's a good question. So I'll give you a good example. So the quick answer to your question is, I've never squarely looked at a room full of angry constituents and I'm going to override your decision, right? They elected me. The voters are my boss. Mayor's not my boss. My colleagues are not my boss. Like the voters are the folks that elected me. So so I hold that very dear to my heart. We had a rezone in Ward Seven. It took about a year at 501 Mystic Valley Parkway, which is right on Ilworth Park Parkway or right Mystic Valley Parkway, Route 16, we'll call it. There's a very big plot of land. People don't know it's there because it's covered by a perimeter of trees. But I jokingly called it the Ward Seven Farm because it's enormous. Like it is a giant plot of land with a single family in a cottage that is uninhabited. So it's, it's one of the few places in Ward Seven that could have been developed. You know, if you look at the ward, you know, we're not Assembly Square, we're not, you know, we're not War Two, like, there are very few places in Ward Seven to even think about a rezone for additional housing in particular. So the development team came to me and said, we're thinking of a four story, 60 unit apartment building. You know, here's what's here now. The the land has been in ownership of this family for decades and decades, like they're ready to to move forward on this. Can we start having conversations with the community? So we held three or four community meetings in person and over Zoom, in person at the senior buildings. So my concern was if the senior buildings is, are the direct abutters to this property, like, I want to make sure like, these aren't folks that typically want to be on a Zoom meeting or or have the opportunity or access to to access Zoom. So I wanted to go there. So we hosted a couple of meetings at the VNA. And we like targeted those three senior buildings to make sure they knew they can come in person and see the renderings. And then I hosted on Zoom for anyone who couldn't come or, you know, like folks, it was in the evening. So people who worked during the day could join the Zoom meeting. Same content. And we presented, the development team presented a proposal for a four story building. You know, walked through, you know, one space per unit, all of the different elements of of the proposal. The meeting itself, there was a fair amount of, I'm not going to say negative constructive feedback and and questions. And it ended up, and I was taking notes, we recorded it, like, it was really helpful to to hear folks what they thought of the potential development. And it really, the feedback centered on a few key areas. One was rodent mitigation. What are we going to do about rodent mitigation during construction and after? There were some flooding issues on the sidewalk. And so like, how are we going to make sure the development doesn't adversely affect the flooding challenges and the infrastructure improvements that need to happen there? And then traffic issues. So Route 16 in Boston Ave, major crash site for the city. It's been, it's been an intersection I've been beating the drum on with the city, with the state, because it's a DCR road, to make changes to make that intersection better. But those were the three, I would say, themes of the feedback that we got. We had some questions about shadows and, you know, I'm going to lose my view of the sunset, you know, that's something we can't really, we can't do much about that. I, I don't believe in in stopping the development of housing in particular because someone's going to lose a view. So you have to kind of weigh the feedback on like, what is the good of the city, right? And in in Ward Seven, there are very few opportunities to build more and to have this to go from one house to 60 units. Like the opportunity for housing greatly outweighed the loss of a view of the sunset. So so I took, we took the, that, those themes of the feedback, went back to the team and we were like, okay, what, what can we do to adjust here? So so the rodent mitigation plan that they eventually submitted with the zoning included an additional couple of years of rodent mitigation on top of what they're required to do for the surrounding properties, including the abutters on the other side, so on Irvington Road, which I thought was a win. The flooding issues, they, we brought in a stormwater expert. I connected them to the infrastructure folks of the city. Like, I just wanted to make sure those i's were dotted, t's were crossed before we moved forward. And they came back with a flood and some stormwater study that they presented back out to the community. And then they also did an additional traffic study, which I thought was insufficient, frankly, when I looked at it. Because it didn't include the rotary and it didn't include the the intersection. So you just did the traffic study for right in front of the building, which we all knew, like, that was not sufficient. So that was really a sticking point after the second round of meetings because we hosted multiple rounds of meetings. And I, and I really pushed them on like, your traffic study was insufficient, like, this is really what the concern is, the community. We're going to add all these cars and it's already a really unsafe area. So, you know, and in the, in that time, I was hearing from constituents like, this is really a big issue. I'm not going to support this. And I was, I hear you. Like, I want to figure out how we, how we come to a compromise around this because I do think the housing piece of this is really important. Ultimately, the rezone got submitted and it went in front of the planning board. Interestingly, and this doesn't happen very often, the planning board voted against it. And then it came back to land use, which I, at the time I sat on, this was before I was president, this was last year. The chair of the planning board at the time lives on one of the streets that empties out onto Route 16 and lives on one of the streets that there's a, there's a big construction project now, another apartment building that was zoned by Wright. So didn't come in front of the council. But that has, the construction has been challenging for people on that street because I've heard from constituents like, the trucks are blocking my way and this is, it's really loud and, you know, construction, I get it. I couldn't get out of my driveway this morning, you know, like a construction is, is there's, when it's construction season in the city, we all know, right? And so he lives on that street and I think like, saw a different perspective on the traffic issues in the area. And so voted against it and and ultimately kind of persuaded other folks as too as well. It was a split vote. Came in front of the land use. Between the planning board meeting and the land use meeting, I went back to the development team and I said, look, the planning board voted against this. Like, it's going to be really hard for me to support this if we don't do something about the traffic issues. So I, I said, I negotiated with them $100,000 community benefit to go directly to the mobility, mobility department at the time of a building permit. So not at the time of rezone, but if they get, if they move this forward and they get a building permit, they have to, they have to pay the city $100,000. That's going to go directly into safe streets measures. So the mobility department can do anything they want with that, right? Look at speed humps, we can add some stop signs, like whatever is the right thing for that stretch of land. But focused on that intersection to the rotary in front of the building to make sure that we're acknowledging the challenges around traffic in that area, but not stopping the development of more and production of more housing. And I called my constituents that were the most vocal about this and I said, this is what I'm proposing in my compromise and this is how I'll support it. Like, how do you feel about that? And I, you know, and I got a mixed bag, you know, people saying like, I still, construction noise and, you know, I'm against this. And some folks saying like, we appreciate your trying here, like, thank you. And that I felt like, if if they can agree to that, I'll support it. And it was really like the night of the land use meeting, probably an hour before the meeting, until I got the final okay from the development team. They're willing to chalk up $100,000. That's not nothing, you know, the original amount was like 30. I'm like, we can't, well, it's a speed hump, you know what I mean? Like, you can't do anything with $30,000 in the city. It has to be enough to make sure that I can say to my constituents, like, we're, we're getting a direct benefit to the community because of this. So that's, that's, and then ultimately, I, in an unusual move, convinced my colleagues to override the planning board recommendation. And so we did end up passing that rezone December of last year. So that was a, that was an example of, we had gotten some constructive feedback. You know, I did have folks who were, who are still unhappy about the development. That's going to be true of any, you know, that's going to be true of any development in the city.
Definitely.
But that ultimately, I felt like we could leverage some community benefit to address some of those challenges and to address the feedback that we got. So I wasn't just steamrolling over my constituents, but I was really hearing what the, what the concerns were. But putting the the, the good of the city, right, ahead, that we wanted more housing. You know, making sure that we are doing everything we can to solve the housing crisis every single day of the city.
You said we were, we're in a housing emergency. We want to do everything we can to produce more housing. You also said that there's not that many opportunities for building more units in your ward in particular. It's already fairly dense. How would you feel about lifting the height limit that people could build up to? Like, would you, how about six story buildings, apartment buildings in your, in your ward?
I'm totally in support of that. And I've spoken to folks with YMB that I know are working on that proposal and I support it.
Awesome. Cool. What if the people, I mean, you're, you're leaving your, your post, but imagine you weren't.
Yeah.
Imagine this comes out, you support it, people, and you get, you have that angry meeting where suddenly 80% of the people in the ward are like, what? We hate this. What are we doing here? Like, vote against this.
Okay, so I'm going to challenge what you just said, which is 80% of the people in the ward are against it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's 80% of the people in that meeting.
That go, yeah, that show up.
To show up, right? So these community meetings are a small slice of the ward.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
It's the slice of the ward that has, that is engaged enough to know there's a meeting happening, has the privilege, right, to have time in their schedule, has a Zoom link, like, doesn't have a screaming child in the background and they have to feed dinner. Which all of our meetings happen during that time.
Yeah.
It, that's a small slice. So for, for me, I always felt like I have to go beyond the slice of people who show up to these meetings. That's true of public hearing for budget. That's, that's been true my entire three and a half years on the council. I've always felt like I need to proactively go out to folks who, you know, don't have the time, aren't as engaged, don't even know I, the most important people in the ward, people who don't know I exist. They don't know who I am and they don't know how I can help them. So how can I reach them? You know, Clarendon Hill, the redevelopment project, they, they, they host meetings with tenants, they, they're having a family barbecue this weekend. Like, I try to go there as much as possible. They, they don't know, they don't, aren't always as engaged, right? In in the day to day meetings of city government, but the, what's happening is really impactful to their, to their world. That's a good example. The parents of kids that are like, you know, I, I remember meeting someone when I was door knocking on my campaign in 2021. It was one of those favorite moments. And as a mom, I get it, you know, knocked on her door, it was sometime in the evening. She opens the door, she like has one kid on her lap, like the steaming pot of pasta, right? One's in the high chair like screaming, mama, you know, and she, and she, she's like, I really want to talk to you because I want to understand your positions. And she, I'm not kidding, pulls out the Somerville budget book. Because this was in June of 2021. And she said, I have questions about the budget. Can I, can we set up another time to talk? And I was like, these are the people who don't, who can't come to the public hearings, who can't show up to these meetings, but like, have a lot to say and they're, they want to engage with the, with city government.
True.
So I try to find them. And she's an example of someone I do email often. And I say, Danielle, like, what, you know, this is what's going on. What do you, tell me what you think. And I, I will remember people on streets, I, you know, have a system to tag them in my email, like, I know that you're interested in, in, you know, the electric vehicle survey that just went out on where should we put more EV chargers? I have a group of constituents who are really passionate about EV chargers. I sent that right to them. I, I don't want to take that survey. I want you to tell me what I should put on that survey. So I try to do the productive outreach because, and I'm going to get back to your question, because I think, I think that that is actually a way in which our work as councillors, that's the most important part of my job, is how do I engage with people who aren't engaging with us? And I think the easy way out is to just listen to the people who come to our meetings.
True.
And if that's all we did, we would have a very limited view of what our constituents think.
Actually, let me change the question, I think, because I think I'm hearing you're saying those meetings are not necessarily representative of the broad opinion within my ward. Let's imagine it actually is. Let's imagine you go talk to everybody and you're like, wow, across the ward, 80% of people like, don't want six story buildings because they're like, yeah, somewhere else in the city would be great, but just, just not in Ward Seven. I don't want one going up next to me. I don't want one to go over here or down this road or more traffic or more noise or more rodents or whatever. And so you say, wow, across the ward, people are pretty against this. Do you swap and say, okay, never mind, I actually don't support this happening? Or do you say, we're in a housing emergency, we're going to have to accept some trade offs. We got to build these somewhere. If everyone says not in my backyard, then there's nowhere to put them.
I guess I'd have to understand, like, what, what's the reasoning, right? You know, it, if it's because it's a, it feels like this is a good idea, but not here, then, right, I have to put the, do what I think is is right for the city and for the ward. But but I don't actually, I can't, that doesn't feel like a realistic situation because I, I don't know if I, if, I'm, I'm trying to think of something where like, I would disagree, I was elected by the constituents, right? I would disagree with 80% of my, of my constituents. It's just not, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think this, well, I mean, I, I don't actually know what support would look like across the city for like the, that's the Somerville YMB plan in particular.
Yeah.
I think if you, my guess is if you went up to the average person in Somerville
Yeah.
with like a single family in a ward like yours.
Right.
And said, or even a triple decker and said, we want to build a six story apartment building next door.
Next door.
On both sides of you, actually.
Yeah.
I imagine you'd get a pretty decent percentage of people saying, well,
Right.
I do support more housing, but like, not that.
Right.
So in the abstract, everyone's like, yes, more housing for sure. We definitely need it. It's a human right. How about next to me? Well, not a six story building, maybe, maybe a three story or maybe, maybe nothing.
No, that's, that's a good example because some of it is, there's a lot of miseducation and misinformation that gets spewed, especially about zoning and especially about housing. The 25 story building in Davis was a really good example of that, how quickly information gets spread. That is not totally accurate. And so sometimes with these proposals, it's really breaking this down for people. Like, what is it really mean? You know, what is the likelihood that two six story buildings are growing up next to you?
Yep. Certainly low.
Probably pretty low.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Right.
It's probably a slow gradual process.
Right, exactly. So like, let's, let's talk through this with folks who are concerned about it, about what it means. There's a lot of, you know, we hear information and there's a lot of fear around like, what does that mean? What does that mean for us? And and it's, I think some of our role is like correcting that information and also helping folks understand what the real impact is on them and their day to day lives over time and that it's not two, two six story buildings going up in the, you know, in the next year.
You referenced the copper mill development. So proposed 25 story tower in Boston or in Davis Square. Above Dragon Pizza, that, that area right there. I believe, I believe the last time I heard about the plan, it was 400 marker rate units, 100 affordable housing units.
Yeah.
Letting the burn come back for two years at the same rent that it was paying now, paying to retain the original wood inside the burn. Two spaces available to the city for free.
Community, yeah.
For community spaces. Retail at the first floor with like a cut through around the corner so people could like, take that corner easier. It seems to me like, as far, and like, as far, I think the developer lives like just outside Davis Square. Like, it's, this seems to me like, almost like a home run in terms of like, the developer understands the area, lives nearby, is bending over backwards to like, retain an institution that the city cares about, being helpful to the city, providing a ton of housing, like thousands of additional people in Davis that could use some more business, I think. Widely, seems to be very controversial.
Yeah.
I would say the most, a lot of people I talked to about it, like, opinions vary a lot. Some people are very for it, but there, I think it has generated a pretty strong backlash. It was the first time I saw someone like proactively make flyers, being like, this is bad. Don't allow this to happen.
Saul still don't know who did that.
Yeah, yeah, someone anonymously sort of posted like protest flyers and, you know, and told people.
They went to houses.
Oh, interesting.
It was in my mailbox.
Oh, interesting. Okay. So yeah, so, so someone's very motivated against this.
That's a lot of work.
And I would say that that's not a totally outlier opinion.
Yeah.
I've talked to a number of people who are like, twenty five stories in Davis, that's madness. So to me, that is actually maybe a good example of a development that seems like it could bring a lot of good to Davis. It would change it. It's a different vibe to have a twenty five story tower versus the like, three or four stories that we have there now. And so this might be a thing where there is a strong backlash from people who are like, this is different than the way it was. I don't like it. Or like, I have legitimate concern, like, it changes it. I don't like the new vibe. I don't like big towers. I don't like shadows. There's, there's plenty of reasonable reasons people could not want this. And so to me, this is sort of an interesting, challenging like kind of moment of, do you say like, the city, like, this benefits the city a lot? And over long term, we think this will help Davis Square, this will help with tax revenues, this provides a lot of additional housing, this gives us new retail. Even though there's a pretty strong pushback on it. Like, to me, there's like, that's an interesting opportunity as an elected to kind of say like, I, I get you and I hear you, but like, sometimes we have to do things that like have compromises because we're trying to solve a big emergency over here.
Right.
How does, how do you feel about that?
So, uh, so let me say a few things about, about the, about the twenty five story building. Right now, it's not going anywhere because of the cost of steel and tariffs and, right, so it's.
This is kind of a hypothetical at this point, unfortunately.
Okay.
But let's imagine they were like, we're ready to start. We just need to, to get a, a new zoning for the spot and then we're, we're gonna build tomorrow. I got, I got the trucks right here.
So what I've been saying to folks is there, there currently is no proposal in front of the council, as you know.
Totally.
No zoning proposal in front of the council. I think it's, we're probably a long ways to go until we get there. And part of that is, as you know, there's a neighborhood council being formed in Davis Square that would have the power to negotiate the community development, community benefits with the developer. Similar to Summer Nova with Union Square Neighborhood Council. What we saw in Summer Nova is years of community engagement and process and some back and forth with the city. And a lot of negotiation on that community, on that C B A, Community Benefits Agreement, that was just voted on recently and passed overwhelmingly. And I think that that's testament to the amount of work and conversations that were had and compromise in that proposal. That is a different proposal today than it was when it was first being talked about. And I can tell you this because I recently was going through some of like my files and, and starting to purge. And I found my original Summer Nova booklet. I mean, it literally was a book. That they came and dropped off to every city councillor of the original proposal. And I was piecing through it because we're about to vote on the zoning in a couple of weeks for Summer Nova. And I was chuckling at, you know, what has changed?
Yeah.
What's gotten better? You know, what are the opportunities that the C B A has provided for the city that weren't in the original proposal? And I think similar to that process, what we're talking about right now is not what's gonna be in front of the council. I can only guess.
Sure.
That there's some opportunities to make this better. There's some opportunities to hear community feedback, to figure out like, what, you know, what are, what are the ways in which we can address some of the challenges and concerns, similar to what I did on Mystic Valley Parkway? You know, the, when folks talk about the desire to retain our local small businesses, which I totally support and I'm like, we don't want Davis Square to be just a, a, you know, square of chains. Which it used to be, many, many years ago, there's a McDonald's and a Dunkin' Donuts and, you know? So it's, it has changed, but it's really, you know, built on the economy of our small businesses right now. You know, the, the neighborhood council will have the power to negotiate. Maybe it's not two years, maybe it's four years for the burn, whatever it is, right? Maybe it's, you know, uh, more permanent affordable rent for those small businesses. Maybe it's, you know, small businesses under a certain amount of revenue. I don't know. I'm, I'm just throwing ideas out there. But, but the, the real power is gonna lie in that neighborhood council negotiation. And so what I've been telling folks is get on the neighborhood council or at least be a part of that process so that they understand your concerns and can negotiate with the developer so that the proposal looks the way the community wants it to look. So I'll just say that, right? And our job as, as, as counselors is to like, understand and, and, and listen to what the feedback is. And make decisions based on that. So, so, so I, so I'll just say, I think what we're gonna eventually get is gonna be different than what it looks like now. Ultimately, the height is probably gonna be the question, right? We're gonna get to a lot of places with benefits and how high we go and how, you know, what Davis Square looks like will be what's top of mind, I think, for the discussion. And I think what's interesting or, or hard about this is we have, you know, we're having this conversation in a vacuum. Outside of like, really talking about what do we envision Davis Square to be? There's a Davis Square Commercial Area Plan. Like, let's go back to that, you know, and let's talk about what we envision the square to be in five, ten, twenty years from now. And how this fits in. So this isn't about are we for or against it? It's what do we want the future of Davis to be? I'm pushing the city to do a Teal Square Commercial Area Plan because I think Teal is like the forgotten little sister of, of Somerville. And there's so much opportunity. This potential boutique boutique, you know, six story boutique hotel in the middle of the square could revitalize and change Teal Square and the amount of foot traffic and business coming from Teal into the businesses down to Davis, right? And so I, I think like, we, we, we do, we can and we do make decisions on development without that level of planning and thinking and visioning. But it's really helpful to have it be mired in some understanding and vision for what I want Davis Square to be. Which I would say is a, you know, we need to pull the Ward six councillor into that conversation because he's obviously been much more on the ground with understanding what went into the commercial area plan. The commercial area plan also got paused during COVID, you know, like there were some challenges there. It was in development, then COVID happened, then, you know, Davis Square has been changing all along. But, you know, I've been talking to people about like, it's not just a twenty five story building. What, do, don't we wanna go higher across the square? You know, it's one of the areas of Somerville that's really well serviced by the T. Incredibly well serviced by the T. The T has gotten a much better. Getting on the red line is a different experience now than it was a year ago. And so we should be going higher. We should be building higher on all of Davis Square. So wouldn't Davis look differently if everything was six or eight stories? Twenty five would feel a little less out of place, right? So, so I, so what I've been saying to people is, this is also about like, long term vision for the square and understanding the need for housing near our transit stops across the city. It's not just Davis. It's all the green line stops. We should be rezoning to make sure that we have housing, you know, transit focused housing and all of, all, all near our green line stops in particular. But Davis is one of those areas. The other piece I will also add is we need to be pulling in an understanding of what's the impact of twenty, of that many people to our infrastructure, making sure like, all those I's are dotted and T's are crossed. You know, how many of those people may or may not have kids going to the schools? Could we handle, you know, like, there's some questions about the impacts to the neighborhood also. Not necessarily that would sway me to vote against it, but that I wanna understand, like, do we have the understanding of what, what this means in terms of just the numbers of people in the square? I think good for the businesses and we want, but we wanna make sure that the infrastructure pieces around it can support it.
I think one of my frustration points with the city currently is that we all seem to agree that we are in a housing emergency. And that housing production, it actually says right in the law, like, it's a, it's a housing production problem. It's a supply problem. Like, we don't have enough housing units being produced. That's actually literally in the ordinance that, that was passed. And, but when we talk about building more, we do a lot of, we add a lot of hoops and process for people to jump through to actually build the housing. It's like you referenced the Summer Nova project, a two year process to get a community benefits agreement to me feels like the kind of thing that is a luxury that you would do when you weren't in an emergency. Like, that's a, that's a wonderful thing to have if everything is kind of going okay. But to me, like, multiple, a multiple year negotiation process with a citizen led organization, to me is like, that's, that's a big cost. Like, that's, that takes projects from viable to not viable potentially. And like, waiting, I guess there's, there's nothing before the council on Copper Mill in particular, right? But to me, the idea of like, we need to wait for a neighborhood council to form, finally pass its bylaws, begin a negotiation process which has no shot clock on it, that could just take years to get to a yes, as we've seen. And then at that point, we will consider starting construction. Like, that's, that feels like, like, when I asked you, like, why is city government slow? That feels like a slow that we have decided, we've like imposed upon ourselves. And there seems to be this like, this built in assumption here, which is like, housing isn't enough. Like, we're in a housing emergency. We're in a housing emergency because there's not enough housing. But if you wanna build housing, you're gonna have to give us some other stuff. Like a hundred thousand dollars to do traffic calming or a whole, like, I mean, the, the, the Summerville, Summer Nova C B A is a huge document, right? There's an enormous amount of things that they had to do. I would expect Copper Mill, if it ever happened, would be a similar sort of thing. And so how do we, this is a complaint of mine and I'm, I'm curious how you square this, where like, if it really is an emergency and we really gotta make housing, can we clear the way a bit and like, smooth it and make it a little bit faster and say like, we don't really have time in a housing emergency for everyone that lives near this thing that has an opinion about it to be happy enough to vote for some additional set of hurdles to build here?
So those processes are in place for, for rezoning, for, for reimagining.
Sure.
Right? What we thought the neighborhood would look like. There is a lot of construction happening that's by right. Right? I, I've lost count in my ward of what's happening by right. So there's housing being produced. So I wanna be clear that we're not, we don't pump the brakes on all the, the by right projects. And there's some opportunities potentially to allow more by right projects, right? The six story, like, proposal, that's not on the table, but hopefully will be soon, right? So, so I wanna share that I actually think most of our housing is coming from those projects right now. And that the processes in place for the big buildings, the rezoning, the reimagining neighborhoods is in place for a reason. So we don't just shift a neighborhood and the, the, you know, without looking at the impacts and that understanding, you know, what that means for the city long term. So I, I actually, I disagree with you. I don't think that we're putting hoops in place for the wrong reasons. I think there's lots happening by right, right now. And there might be some more opportunities to do that in the future. But I, I actually, the other thing I, I'm gonna push back on is, is I, when I look at the housing emergency and the housing crisis, it's not just production for me. That is one leg of the stool. We're not, I was sharing with you earlier, we're not talking about as often because they're, we're stymied by state processes on what, what we can and can't do in the city, about housing stability. So once people are in their homes, how do we keep them in their homes? And not have them constantly have to turn over or leave Somerville? Because a landlord like mine raises the rent every single year without making any adjustments to the homes. Because we don't have enough housing for families to live and grow in the city, right? We have, we're building one and two bedrooms only. And that's one of the things that I pushed for in the building in my ward was you gotta have some three bedrooms. We gotta make sure we have some family focused housing. I know they don't go, it's harder to rent those, right? But it's important for us to be able to say to the families, you can stay here. Like, there's a place for you in Somerville to stay here. We don't have enough accessible housing. You know, my mom has mobility issues. She lives in California. I would love to bring her to Somerville. Where would I, other than this building, where would I find a place for her? Who uses a walker, who can't go up a flight of stairs. She can't even go up the four or five steps to my front door, even if I live on the first floor, which I don't. I live on the second floor. So, you know, there's, there's challenges around housing stability and how we keep people in their homes. You know, eviction prevention, you know, the rental assistance challenges, the money that ran out after ARPA. You know, eviction record sealing, you know, all the tenant protections, rent stabilization, pass, you know, broker's fees. I'm currently apartment hunting now and it's for a lot of apartments, first less, first last security and broker fee. For some of these apartments, that's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know a lot of people and families that just have twenty thousand dollars to hand over in a, in a check. Like, being able to get rid of those broker's fees or pass them back on, you know, incentivizing landlords to ensure that we can figure out ways to keep rents below market. Boston's looking into that. I asked our Office of Housing Stability, like, what is that gonna take in Somerville for us to do? How do we incentivize people to bring rents down and to not keep raising? I mean, it's kind of outrageous, right? What's happening. And I was sharing earlier, like, there are other challenges to staying in Somerville as a, as a mom. You know, the, our lead laws, which are, it's a state law, which was put into place to protect families. Which requires that a, a apartment is deletted for a child under six. Means that the, the actual, which, like, I support that, right? I don't want my kid to get leather poisoning as a mom. In reality, in practice, this is what happens with laws. We put them in place, we think they're a good idea. In practice, it means that I'm shut out of ninety percent of apartments because people don't wanna call me back because of a toddler.
Right.
Like, how do we talk about housing stability around keeping people in Somerville in their homes? As a, as a piece of the pie, as a piece of the puzzle around the housing crisis? So housing production, absolutely. We can do something about that. We, that's one of the few powers we have as a council is to rezone. But we also, as a city, can think about housing stability in a real way. You know, what are the barriers to, for people? Obviously, you know, with rising grocery costs, rising medical costs, like, paying rent and paying a higher rent is just out of the question. So we see people having to leave the city all the time. You know, there, I just, I think that we're, we sometimes forget about that piece of the puzzle and that, and that, you know, leg of this, of the, of the stool around housing when we talk about the housing emergency. So I just wanted to name that as well, because I do think there are some things that we've done, that we can continue to do and continue to push the state to allow us to bring rent stabilization to Somerville.
I, I do think that the deletting laws are an interesting example of an unintended consequence of a, of a, of a well intentioned thing.
Right.
I think some of the things you just touched on have similar risks to them.
Yeah.
Like, even just like, being very vague, like, some sort of like eviction protection, like strengthening eviction protections, for example, and saying like, we wanna prioritize stability and, and not landlord's ability to remove people. Or could have a second or like an unintended consequence of landlords are less willing to rent to people, but they think there's any risk that they wanna evict them later, for example. So like, I, I, I worry that some of these things are, are similar, like, to that experience you're having right now. Where it's like, it's, it seems good, like, rent control sounds kinda nice. Yeah, don't let the rent go up. Or like, don't make it harder to evict people. And then in practice, you look at the effect on the market and like, real people's interaction with it, you see, actually, this makes it harder to achieve housing for some people because of the unintended consequences of the laws.
Yeah. I hear you. There, you have to weigh like, the, the positive that would come out of something like eviction protection versus the potential. And then adjust for it too, right? I don't, I don't know how much our state legislature understands the impact of the lead laws. You know, I don't know how many people are telling them about it. I'm certainly gonna call my state rep about it. But, you know, there are other ways to adjust and course correct.
Yeah, that's all right. No easy answers. It's a complicated thing, for sure. Ooh, looking back, were there any council decisions that you privately disagree with but publicly supported? For, for political purposes or expediency or vote trading or something like that?
Vote trading. I really love that. I, yeah, that's sort of not how I roll. I need to be able to sleep at night.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Well, I could imagine a, a place where you'd be pragmatic about it.
Yeah.
Like, you could be like, I don't love this, but it actually makes sense for me to support this for some reasons, you know, to gain support from somebody or because, yeah. For some like political purpose, I suppose. But it's, it's okay, there's no answer there. That's coming to mind. I'll hit you with another one.
Okay.
All right. Who do you think is the most effective councillor at getting what they want and what makes them so effective?
At getting what they want?
Getting things done, let's say. Yeah, you know, this.
Multiple layers to that question.
Yeah, maybe from the city or getting something passed or just sort of, the people who, like, for whatever their agenda is, who tends to get wins on the agenda they want, they want, whether it's passed legislation or behavior of some kind from the city?
That is so dependent on the issue. I would say like, there are some, you know which issues your colleagues are passionate about. You just do. So like, I've been beating the drum on language justice since the day I got on the council, for good reason. You know, I come from a family, my mom's language, first language is not English. It's very personal to me. And I worked, I've worked in immigrant services for a long time. I think language justice is really important in the city that, you know, it has the demographics that we have that says that we're for equity and inclusion. And my first year on the council was the first year that the mayor invited the councillors to submit budget priorities. That had never been done before. And we each got a couple of minutes, this process has changed over the years, but we all, we each got a couple of minutes to kind of. but we each got a couple of minutes to kind of stump for our issue. And fight for one of our priorities to be one of the 10 consensus items. And I fought for language justice and got it, like, you know, which you could name the 10, right? Housing and transportation, you know, saved streets and ISD money and, you know, but I, so I was really proud of like, this being one of the 10. And it's because I threw my whole, like, heart into it. And people knew this was a really important issue to me. And I think there are people on the council that we know, you know, Matt's been focused, Council McLaughlin's been focused on the charter since the day I got on. It was one of the few, you know, first things we talked about when I started. It was like, let's talk about charter reform, let's talk about transit-oriented development, you know, higher density opportunities in the city, including in Ward 7, because often, you know, people think density should be in Ward 1 and not 7, and he wanted a real partner around that. And so I, so I know what are the issues and what are the things that he's really passionate about as a counselor.
But no one stands out in your mind as like, wow, they managed to get a lot of their particular things done? And they were particularly effective because of reason X? Besides you?
Me. I think that Council Strezzo is a strong constituent services counselor. I think she, she is the strongest constituent services counselor. She's responsive and dogged with getting issues that constituents are bringing up to the right people in city government, and I think she deserves the accolades for that. You know, this, she does this full-time too, so she has, she has more time and focus on it, which I appreciate. But I think, like, so she stands out as a constituent services counselor, like, superstar. I think in terms of like, legislation and other things, I think everyone is effective in their own way, depending on, you know, with some exceptions, depending on...
Oh, like who?
Well, I mean, I think there are some counselors who, who don't get as much, aren't as effective, because they've chosen to be antagonistic with either their colleagues or city staff. And so I actually think the other side of your question is easier for me to answer, because I think everyone else, like, I mean, I think that everyone is, when they prioritize an issue and are passionate about something, are effective, you know? But it's really dependent on the issue. Like, there isn't someone that stands out as like, oh, if they bring it up, it's going to get passed. I think everyone sort of has things that they focus on and that they're knowledgeable about. You know, like, I send my constituents who have water meter issues to Ben, because I'm like, he's been really leading on this and like, has more information about what's going on with the leaks and everything than I do. And like, he's been really helpful on navigating that for some of my constituents. So like, that, we do that also for each other.
Who do you feel like is ineffective due to being antagonistic? Do you want to say? You are, you are leaving, you know?
Yeah, I know. I mean, I, I mean, I think I'm disappointed, especially during budget season, at the way in which some of my colleagues interact with city staff. And I can say that, being a faux member of the city staff. Like, I was on the other side for 18 months, where I didn't have to testify for, because I wasn't a staff member. I didn't have to testify during budget hearing at the time. But I remember when I was a consultant, when I was contracting with the city during budget season, the intensity and anxiety that city staff experience because 11 people around a horseshoe have the power to like, make big changes to their departments if they don't do or say the right thing during a budget hearings. That is not a level of stress and anxiety I think our incredibly hardworking, incredibly talented staff should be dealing with. And I think it's the tone and tenor and rhetoric of some of our, some of my colleagues during budget season in particular. But it leaks out all year, depending on the issue and, you know. I think there's a way in which we can question and, which we should. That's our job. We should be questioning what's going on. But I think there's a way in which we can ask these questions and be curious and respectful in our tone. And I don't, I think that there are folks that go over the line. And I, in my first year as counselor, I sat, in my first two years, I sat on finance, three years? When did I come off finance? I was on finance for two or three budget cycles. I sat through those budget hearings. I experienced the tone and tenor during those budget hearings of the finance committee to the city staff. And I started to notice, and part of my professional background is I spent seven years recruiting and training women to run for office. So I'm particularly sensitive to gender and racial dynamics. Because I trained women, I, I, like, this was my job, right? Is I, I know what it, that it is different for a woman in politics than a man in politics. I know it's different for a person of color to be in positions of power than a white person. So I, I'm sitting, these are mostly on Zoom, these hearings. We're not at the horseshoe, listening to the way in which colleagues are interacting and frankly, interrogating city staff at 10 o'clock at night. And I was disappointed at the way in which the questions got asked because it didn't seem respectful. I thought that there, there's ways in which we can ask these questions respectfully, in a spirit of curiosity, in the spirit of we're all on the same team. This very much felt like you're on a different team, and I'm going to ask a bunch of questions to get you. And so I spent much of the next six months re-listening and tracking the amount of time we spent with each department head and their race and gender. And I pulled that together, and I presented this out to the council a year, maybe it was spring of the next year, before the next budget season. Because I said, I wanted to make a point, like, we have to do better. If we say that we're, you know, we value equity and inclusion, like, part of it is understanding our own biases, right? Which we all carry as counselors, and doing better for our constituents, being the model that we want to set. And what I found was, taking out the police in particular, because you have, like, they're an anomaly in terms of, in terms of the amount, you know, they're an anomaly in terms of the amount we budget toward them, excuse me. And so it would skew my results. So if you look at the amount of money each budget, each department gets, the race and gender of the department head, and the amount of time we spent questioning them, there was a direct correlation between women and women of color getting asked more questions and getting proposed more cuts to their department than male-led or white-led departments that came in with bigger budgets. So, so, coming back to your initial question, I, I think that there's a way in which we can model better how to interact with our city staff that acknowledges the hard work that they put into their job, acknowledges the expertise they bring to the table, and isn't antagonistic in the way that makes it feel like we're not on the same team. We are on the same team. We're just a body that gets to ask the right questions, to make the right decision around the budget. That should be our job. The other thing is, if we don't understand what a, what a department head does, or what a, what a department is charged to do, we're not doing our jobs as counselors, because we're not informed enough to make the right decisions around budget season.
Sure.
I don't think, my personal opinion. My first year, I sat down with every department head. And I was like, tell me about your department, what should I know going into budget season? Because it gave me tools and an understanding of this role that, that allowed me to have the knowledge to make the right decisions around budget season. And I noticed, when we got to budget season, that information and that knowledge was not, that wasn't true across the board, it was not widely spread. And so, everyone sort of has a different perspective on our roles. And I think there's a couple of folks on the council that I think they think that our role is to, is to be more of a gotcha, you know? And I think that comes from a place of past Somerville challenges, right, with city government. We know 20 years ago, city government looked much, looked very different than it does today. And there, that there was corruption, that there was, you know, people hiring friends and brothers and, you know. That happened, sure, that's a part of our history. We also have to like, acknowledge where we are now and acknowledge the folks that are at the table now. And I think some of that baggage gets carried over, and that there's assumptions made that this is just always how Somerville is and will be, that I think are inaccurate. And I can say that being from the inside. Like, I've worked side by side with many of these department heads during COVID. I, I know them in a way that my colleagues don't. And I, I will say, like, that has been very hard to stomach. Because I, I know how hard they work, and I know how hard it is for them to be put through the wringer during budget season when, like, they just want to make sure that their team has a job the next day.
Just quickly, how would you feel about a plan to make, move, make the city, the council positions full-time?
Oh, gosh, I have so many things to say about this. I'm glad you're asking.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe briefly, so we can cover other things too. But just in general, change the salary to be a reasonable full-time salary, move more of the meetings to a daytime sort of thing, so it's not sort of crammed in outside the, your normal work hours.
Sure.
Broadly in favor, sounds like a good change, or too much, or is that, is that, is there like, are there downsides there?
So, I'm in favor of that. I think what got missed in the conversation about salaries a few months ago, we were talking about, you know, indexing councillor salaries to the COLAs, that the non-union staff, like, there was a conversation about, about our salaries that missed out on the opportunity to talk about, is this job part-time?
Yeah.
And newsflash, it's not. And I think what happened was, there was a few people, I don't know who, in city government that like, decided, estimated how many hours that we spend at this job, and didn't ask the council what we think we spend on this job. And that really upset folks who know what we spend, how much time we spend on this job, and know that it's not really part-time for a lot of us. And so that conversation turned very quickly, for obvious reasons. I think that was a difficult pill to swallow around the assumptions that people made around how much time we do and don't spend. But I think what we missed in that conversation is like, let's talk about what's changed in the last 10 years, certainly since COVID. And we see this, there's, there's actual political science, there's data research backing this up. The engagement in, especially since Trump, in the last 10 years, the engagement in local municipal government has spiked, right? So, Trump happened, people got really involved in their local government because they're like, I don't know what to do at the federal level, but this is what I could do now. COVID happened, there was an opportunity to engage with your city government virtually in a hybrid way, that never happened before. That spiked, we see the spikes, if you just, just look at 311 calls alone, which is what I did during COVID, like, the spike never went down. It's just this upward trend in city government around engaging with your municipal officials in a way in which we haven't talked about the changes and shifts. If you ask a city councillor or alderman from 10 years ago how many days a week they were at committee meetings, they would be aghast at the number of nights, four, I spend away from my child.
Wow, is it four?
It's three to four a week at the bare minimum. Like, I do the bare minimum, I don't do, I didn't go to Taste of Somerville, I don't do the community events because I just need to be able to see my child one day a week. That's just like, for my own mental health, I would like to put my child to bed one night a week. I, I do not put my child to bed most nights a week. Me sitting down for dinner with him is an anomaly in his life, which is why I needed to ship some things. But we don't talk about how different the lives of a councillor, alderman, back then are than 10 or 15 years ago. And so, we've missed out on the conversation really about, is this full-time or part-time? And if it's not part-time, and we can't, we don't have the money for full-time, like, what support does a councillor need to, you know, could I have a part-time person that could fill in for me for some of these events? That could sit in on that budget hearing that I can't be at? Because I want to, you know, I, walking here, I'm listening to the budget hearing because I'm catching up on the meetings I can't be at, right? But that's part of the job, I do that. I wake up, I put my AirPod in while I'm making breakfast for my child, catching up on the night before if I'm not at that meeting. So, but I have to do that because when we get to the budget vote, I need to know what happened at that budget hearing.
Right.
So the, so we've missed out on the conversation about how many hours this job really is and the requirement, or not requirements, the expectations of our constituents that we have in Somerville. And so, do I support being full-time? 100%, like, 100%. I don't know what it's going to take to get there, but if there's incremental progress, I'm hoping instead of a salary increase, we talk about staffing, that we, that I would rather have someone help, you know, get through my email inbox every night. And draft responses, or research this for me, or look at this legislation, like, the stuff that takes a lot of time that someone could do, that I could delegate. That would be really helpful. So, yes, this is something I'm really passionate about, but I think we, we're losing sight of the bigger picture when we're just talking about dollars and cents for our salaries, when we should really be talking about what does this job need?
Yeah. I feel like it also creates a sort of unfortunate power imbalance, because some folks in the council can be full-time.
Correct.
And others can't.
Correct.
And that doesn't quite seem right to me. Like, I'd love to see everyone at the same playing field because there's a salary that supports doing this full-time.
Right. I am an award that the councillor before me was full-time. It was a rude awakening for people, and I work for myself. I have a very flexible schedule. I respond to constituent calls, emails during the day, all the time. I take daytime meetings all the time, because frankly, it's been easier for me since becoming a mom to take a daytime meeting than an evening meeting, because I have so many evening committee meetings. But I work for myself, and I can make up my work on the weekends when my child is asleep, my consulting work when he's napping or whatever, which is what I do for this job.
If you could be full-time, would you, do you think you would stay in your position?
I mean, if it was at a salary that could help support my family in Somerville, you know, sure, I would consider that, but...
Was that one of the big pressures to sort of stop doing it? It's just how much you had to fill it in around the edges on top of working a normal job?
That was a big part of it. I also have a, I have a career opportunity, I have a new job opportunity I'm starting in July. That is a big job that will require me to be really focused nine to five on that job. And I know, I mean, I work for myself, and I am a pretty flexible boss. I know what it takes to be a good city councillor, and I, I can't do that well with a full-time job that requires my focus 40 hours a week, like, in an office in Boston, and see my child. Like, there just something had to give there, and so that's why I had to make this decision.
Yep, fair enough. What are the biggest tensions right now between the council and the mayor?
Right now? I was like, a couple of months ago, that was charter. It's budget season.
What's the deal with the charter now? What's the current status, just like, maybe one or two sentences on it?
It is working its way through the State House.
Okay.
To be on the ballot in November.
Okay. Did it end up being two separate things?
Two separate things.
Okay, so...
The charter and then the mayoral four-year term.
Okay, cool, separate, separate ballot questions.
Assuming it gets to the State House before they recess, then it will be on, both will be on the ballot in the fall.
Okay. Any major changes on the charter piece, like structurally? Or is it kind of just like cleaning up the language and reorganizing it?
Oh, just cleaning up the language.
Okay, so it's no major changes there?
Right.
Okay. So basically, the only real structural change is mayoral term to four years, which is a separate thing.
From the, right, from the charter that we passed, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
So right now, I would say the tension is budget. And you know, everyone has their own priorities in an economic environment that's really hard, that's getting harder. We're about to go to court in July for our lawsuit against the Trump administration, right? So, losing the federal, that 19 million of federal funding mostly would impact, I'd say, mobility, but other big projects in the city.
Interesting. Yeah, so what's the, what's the budget looking like this year versus last year? Like, roughly, like, is it down a chunk? Is like, what are the numbers, off the top of your head?
Oh, do I know that off the top of my head? Like, not in an exact amount that I would want to, I'd want to double-check.
Okay.
So I don't misspeak on the exact numbers.
Okay.
But, you know, we, it's, every department, it's, they were asked to submit a level service plus a 3% decrease. There's a hiring freeze across the city. And so, like, taking, like, freezing all of the open positions right now, that there isn't anyone in process for.
And there's a lot of those, last time I checked.
There's a lot of those. There's a lot of those, yeah. So that's a, that's a very big deal. You know, we have to increase the budget around certain, you know, health insurance, pensions. Like, there's some things that we have no choice over. We have contracts that we just signed, union negotiation contracts that we just signed. We have to fulfill those contracts. So, so that's why other departments are figuring out their programmatic cuts and their service cuts. Basic services are not being cut anyway. I think, like, we're in a stronger place as a community because of our strong fiscal management over the years and being conservative and not like, not digging into... over the years and being conservative and not like, not digging into free cash and stabilization funds in such a way that other municipalities have. And so we're at this point avoiding layoffs, thank goodness, I think, like barring any big cuts on the council side, right, which I don't know. But that, I think, shows the strength, the fiscal strength of our city in comparison to other municipalities that are facing hundreds of people having to be laid off. So we're, we're, we're not flush, we are doing the best we can in this economic environment. It will be interesting to see what happens after the, we go to court with the lawsuit and how that impacts the budget. But it's been, you know, we've had slower growth than we expected. We projected, I forget the, I think it's 12%, or we projected a certain percentage of, of new growth. Um, and we're under that, so that's part of the challenge, right, is we, we project what new growth is gonna come into the city and how that's gonna come back to us.
Is that growth like property taxes? Is that what's being projected there?
Commercial, yep. Um, and that's been slower.
Commercial tax revenue?
Because of the economic environment we're in.
Yeah.
Um, and so we have to be careful about, you know, what, how we spend our dollars now so that we're like continuing to maintain that strength over the years. You know, this, I'm on the school committee as well, and uh, we just passed our budget um on the school side.
You're on the school committee as well?
So the president of this, of the council serves on the school committee.
I see, you're, okay, I got you, yeah.
Yeah, no, I didn't like run for school committee.
Okay, I was like, wow!
The president of the council serves on the school committee.
Gotcha, what's the name of that? There's like, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
And so I've been involved in the school budget, um, and, you know, as a mom, like we wanna do everything we can to maintain um the strength of our teachers and workforce and educators with the confines of the, the reality of this budget. Um, our school buildings, right, need a lot of work, like there's, there's a lot of work we have to do in the city, and we also have to be conservative about how we spend so that we don't get in a situation down the road where we can't keep up. Um, this water and sewer rates got passed last night after two and a half hour presentation. And part of the challenge with water and sewer is that we didn't pass an increase last year. The city council voted against it because of the the sharp increases our constituents were seeing, and we, we hadn't at the time had information on whether or not we could provide ratepayer assistance. So we asked, we hired a consultant to do a study, et cetera. We have now, we now have that information, which is it's against state law to do a ratepayer assistance program that's income-specific. So there, the water and sewer department, um, and our, our infrastructure of asset management director, Rich Ray, who's amazing, is figuring out other ways to lessen the uh impact of the increases, so going to quarter, you know, more frequent billing cycles so that there's, it's not, you're not paying a bigger chunk but smaller over time. Anyway, I won't bore you with those details, it was two and a half hours of a, of a presentation, it was great meeting, you should check it out. But because we didn't pass an increase last year, the increase this year is a little bit higher than I think we all are comfortable with. But if we don't pass it, the increase next year could be 40%. Like, the impact down the road, and we wouldn't have the money for a bunch of this, these infrastructure projects that are critical. Morrison Ave, you know, to alleviate the flooding here on the path, we need to do Morrison Ave infrastructure work. And so if we don't, if we didn't pass this, this um increase last night, the impact down the road would be devastating. It's sort of like, if you don't, um, if you don't go to the doctor for your preventative care, like you're gonna have a much bigger bill at the ER. Like, that's sort of how I see the water and sewer rates. And so we, I, we were getting some emails from constituents being like, don't pass this, this is outrageous. But the, the economic impact of not passing it would be much greater than if we, we like allowed a little, the drip over time so that we could pay for the infrastructure projects and for the increases that we need in staff in that department.
So we have an interesting, so we have a strong mayor system in Somerville. Mayor has a lot of the power, they appoint the department heads and those people get discerned, mostly kind of what happens in the city. Um, council has some power. It seems like to me, this manifests in some things I see at the council meetings sometimes, where it appears like people are trying to get things on the mayor's radar by sort of making noise about it in a meeting in some way. Is that like a reasonable description? Because sometimes I'm saying like, this doesn't seem to be a debate, it seems like actually everyone agrees.
Yeah.
And someone would kind of, like a, an order will get proposed, that's just going to like a committee that someone is already the chair of. But they'll speak for eight minutes about it, being like, this is, you know, pound the table, kind of like, this is bad, this is bad. And I'm like, what's happening here? Because you're kind of preaching to the choir. And over time, I think, I kind of figured out like, oh, I think this is actually like, the mayor's representative is here. And this is kind of like, you wanna get on record as like supporting this thing, or having tried to do something, or tell your constituents that like, I, I talked about it, I brought it up at the meeting at least. Is that a reasonable, like, read of the situation that I'm, that I'm seeing there?
I think they're trying to get the mayor's attention. I think it's an election year and they're wanting to tell their constituents, you know, you know, bringing things up that they get in their email inbox or get on their voicemails. I think it's a, probably a mix of those things. I don't think they're trying to convince us.
Right, because everyone seems to agree most of the time in the, in the chambers, how I might feel of it. That was, that was a head scratcher for me for a little while. I was like, what's, what's happening here? And then I was like, ah, I think I figured that out.
Our meetings would be much shorter without the grandstanding, but what do I know?
There is a little bit of grandstanding perhaps, is one of my critiques of the, of the current situation. Um, is that the best, does that, does it work at times? Like, does it, does it get things done? Does it sometimes like cause the mayor or somebody in the city to sort of take notice and be like, oh, okay, someone's mad about this, let's, let's look into it and like, let's try to get something done? Or is it mostly for the benefit of like constituents and sort of saying like, well, I tried?
No, it sometimes does work.
Okay.
Um, I think it depends, but it, I mean, we voted down the, the proposal from the mayor around Founder's Rink last night, and I think a lot of that came from the constituent response we got around it, you know, I frankly, like before that came to the agenda, I don't, I wasn't tracking what was going on at Founder's. And so I, it was a crash course on what was happening and the impact to the particularly youth hockey um in Somerville. But that, you know, I, I'm not sure the mayor thought that was gonna be a thing, you know? Um, and it became many, many, many meetings of discussion, um, and ultimately a unanimous vote down. Another example, um, oh boy. There was a, early on, on my, early on on my time on the council, when I had met with, I toured the Teal Square Fire Station around the repairs needed there, but in that tour, um, we talked about, this was when Assembly Fire Station was a glimmer of our eye. And they had said, you know, we need a full station there, not just a one, I forget what they called it, like one responder truck. That's not the right technical term, but um, you know, that was one of those things that we, there were a bunch of councillors who got the same message, um, and put orders in to make sure this was a full Assembly Fire Station and not just the original proposal, and that shifted. And I think part of that was just like the pressure from us and the discussion of like, this, the number of, of constituents, the height of the buildings, the challenges in Assembly Square, they need their own fire station. Excuse me, and um, that was a shift, right? So like, enough pressure does make change. And then there are times where the mayor's allowed to, you know, dig her heels in around something. There was, related to the fire department, a proposal to hire laterally from other um fire departments in the Commonwealth instead of go through our civil service process because it takes longer. And there was some real pushback on this council about it. I have a lot of firefighters in Ward Seven. I got direct, I mean, I, people asked me to come to their homes, like listen to their story, I was like, I hear you, right? Like, you know, kids who, you know, generations of firefighters in their family, and they've been sitting on the list, and now they're gonna be passed over for someone from Woburn? That's not fair. So a lot of us pushed back on that, and there was basically a like, oh well, this is just what we're gonna do because it's more efficient. In the end, she ended up, she ended up employing a little bit of a hybrid strategy where she took some people from the list and some people from, you know? And maybe we made a difference by making a stink, but like, it wasn't a total win. So it really depends on the issue and, and where she's gonna budge. But yes, we can, you know, the, oh gosh, good example, the local control item around, did you follow this? So, so, so inside baseball.
We're getting, we're getting wonky here?
So, so wonky. So there was an item in May, um, I put forward, uh, in April in advance of when the school committee was gonna start debating the budget. That would give, it was a state, we had to accept this, this state statute that would give the council power to approve a school budget that was different than the mayor's. It'd be the only time we would have a power to do anything but cut. And I thought, this is a procedural issue. This is just a tool in our toolbox. This isn't about this year's budget or next year's budget. This is about giving us the tools in our toolbox that we should have as a council.
Okay.
So I put it forward.
So there's a state law passed that allows this, and we could adopt it locally?
We should adopt it locally.
Okay, if the council adopts it, it's like, okay, now we are.
Now we have the tool in our toolbox.
Gotcha.
In case we ever wanted to use it.
Mm-hmm. Somewhat contentious?
Not on the council.
Okay.
The mayor.
Sure.
Did not want this passed. Now, we learned, unlike other ordinances, she, we would need her signature. And she basically wrote a memo saying, I'm not gonna sign it. I could have withdrawn it at that point, but I chose not to because I think it's important for us to be on record saying we want it.
Sure.
So in the future, we want to, I don't know what the council's gonna do now, but, um, but we, we passed it and she didn't sign it. So that's an area where it wasn't the council putting pressure on her, it was members of the community putting pressure on her to give us the power to do it. People were sending emails and, you know, um, phone, phone calls, but ultimately that was the decision she made and, and stuck with.
How do you feel about the mayor's performance of her duties in general?
That's a good question. Um, you know, I have had my my frustrations with the pace and the, um, the pace particularly around decision-making in the city. And that's just, and what, and I admit, it's a stark difference than the mayor we had before, like stark. And that, so I think part of it is, it's hard not to compare, the speed in which decisions got made. There are pros and cons to both sides of this, right? So I've had my frustrations around the speed of decisions. Um, my frustrations are not around, for the most part, the eventual decisions that get made, I mostly agree with. Um, I think her heart's in the right place. I think things like, oh, good example, the the SMEU, SMA, SMEU, um, union negotiation and that contract took way too long. I get it, it did, right? We are stat, we need to maintain our staff and retain and, and increase morale, and oof, that took way too long. And the outcome around it was incredible. The way in which she focused on equity, the way in which she focused on the lowest paid staff, the way in which she focused on eliminating gender disparities and racial disparities in the city that were, have been there for decades. Like, I get why it took the, as long as it did. I think what we needed was more communication and transparency about it. And it's hard with a union negotiation, but that's a good example of many issues in the city where like, ultimately, I, I get where you're going and I, I agree with the ultimate outcome, but there, the communication around it leaves something to be desired and the pace of which the decision gets made leaves something to be desired. So, um, so I, you know, I grade the performance like, not an A, but, you know, like, the ultimate outcome, I, I appreciate um what she's trying to do, and I appreciate the rigor in which she does them, but, um, but she could do a better job of communicating what's happening and why things take as long as they do.
Okay, and so will you like support her in her campaign for reelection?
I'm gonna support her in her campaign.
Okay. Cool. Is there a problem that everyone complains about but the cancel, the council actually has very little power to fix?
Rent stabilization's probably a good example of that. Budgetary power, like people want more money here, you know, we don't have that, we don't have the power to reallocate, we just have the power to cut. Which is hard. And hard to explain, you know? I mean, I think, like, the day-to-day quality of life questions and, and issues. You know, God, safe streets and traffic calming is a good example of like, we can't just add a speed hump tomorrow on your street. That's not, that's not even really a mayoral council power issue, it's more of like, there's a process that the city goes through to evaluate. But that's often an area where I have to say, like, I don't, I can't just force mobility to put a speed hump, and I think people do think that that's how it works.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's hard.
Sure.
Because that's something that I have to explain, like this is or is not.
Yeah, yeah.
What I, what I can do.
Yeah.
And also, you know, uh, like, this local, local uh control over school budget was a good example where we were getting flooded with emails, and I was saying like, that's, you, you have a council who's gonna support this. Like, if you're going to be sending 100 emails, like, please direct this to the mayor. So sometimes there's a little bit of that, that happens where we get the pressure on the council because we're the legislative body, people think they have to pressure us, but like, really, really, you gotta go back to the mayor. And so I will say that probably happens more often, is that we're just, we, we're all supportive, right? We agree, um, but like, please go back and pressure the mayor and send your emails to her.
Is there a moment you look back on and wish you had spoken up more forcefully?
In my first year, um, so under the police department, there's a really incredible program called CORE, Community Outreach, Health and Recovery. This woman, Patty Contente, runs it, and it's a, uh, actually, she's leaving, but um, it's a group of social workers that works under the police department. And they work in very specific, with very specific incidents, domestic violence, child abuse, they work with some of the unhoused population, on substance abuse issues. They work with some of our most vulnerable in the city. They're a model that other municipalities try and replicate. They're an incredible group that does so much with so little. Um, she's one of the people I met with very early on when I was starting out. Like, teach me about your department, I don't know what CORE is, you know? And we sat down for hours, and she really walked me through it. It's, for some of the situations, there are what's called a co-response, where if they're going out in a violent domestic violence and, and, you know, situation, they might bring a police officer with them. They're a member of the police department. They are, they are paid under the police department budget. In my first year on the council, um, as we were discussing the budget, um, I asked her, what does she need? And she says, you know, I, I have this number of interns that we pay, if I could turn this into a, like, one or two FTEs, you know, it would just take this much money, not much, I mean, like, under $100,000. I could hire them tomorrow to be full-time, literally, like, we passed the budget end of June, like July 1st, she could hire them. At the, you know, this was 2022, like, we are coming out of COVID, we're in a mental health crisis, like, you know, more social workers, I felt like, we could all agree on.
Sure.
We get to budget season and we can't, we don't have the power to reallocate, but we can make resolutions reallocating money. So as a cut gets made, a councillor can suggest to the mayor that this is how she spends that money.
Sure.
That is nice, right, to be able to at least say or opine on where the money should go, okay?
A non-binding suggestion.
Non-binding suggestion. Lots of things we do are non-binding suggestions.
I've noticed.
All the resolutions are, right?
I've noticed.
Yeah, suggest, we merely suggest that this is what you should be doing.
Yes.
There was a cut made, uh, and I requ, I made a resolution to reallocate that money back to CORE, to hire these two social workers, full-time. Because that money would technically go back to the police department line item. It failed.
Because people were in a, like a don't fund with the police more mode at the time?
Right. And I didn't do, I didn't advocate in the way and as forcefully as I could have because I didn't think this would fail. I didn't, I also didn't, you know, without violating open meeting law, like, ask a couple of my colleagues who I didn't know where they were, what they thought of this idea in advance. I didn't do any of that because I didn't think this would fail. So that was a learning lesson for me.
Interesting, so, so the resolution failed?
The resolution failed.
Yeah, okay.
Against social workers.
Sure.
So people say all the time, like, you know, we all, we all have the same values, sure, but in practice things can get misconstrued. It was also my first year on the council, people, you know, we didn't build the trust, people don't know me, like, who's this person, there was misinformation about whatever, right? People can have their own assumptions about who I am and what I'm for, but I'm literally trying to get social workers on the street on July 1st in the city, and it failed. And I was like, that was a shock, and that was a good learning lesson for me around the politics around this and like, building good relationships with my colleagues. The other time I wish I, I did more, not spoke up more. The other time I wish I, I did more, not spoke up more, but did more is, this is such a small, it's not small to them, but like, you know, it's how the sausage is made. There were the, the bike lane construction on Holland. That proposal and process was interesting because there was, pre-COVID, there was a compromise proposal that was accepted by the community, the residents, the business owners, like, you know, mobility, the whole city. And then COVID hit, everything was put on hold for, for that, for the Holland Street reconstruction. And then Steve Connelly died tragically on Broadway on a bike. And we had a contractor ready to go to start building the, the one-sided bike lane on Holland that was the agreed on plan by the city and by the community. The mayor decided unilaterally to make two, two sides of the street bike lanes and dramatically shift the plan. There was no wiggle room on that. I pulled together angry people on all sides being like, we decide, we had hours and hours of discussion, ironically with then-councillor Valentine about this. But there was no budging there. Okay, fine, so let's make the best of this and like figure out, okay, we need more accessible spots. Where are we gonna put them? Like, how do we make this plan better, given the constraints that we're in? I'm, I'm not against the bike lane, but just like, there was a plan in place for a bike lane and now that plan is different. What happened was there was a proposal, I mean, again, small proposal to shift the times of the loading zone in front of a couple of the small businesses in Teal Square to allow for more daytime meter traffic, like stopping for lunch at Angelina's and PJ Ryan's. And it failed in front of the Traffic Commission because there were some people that like didn't understand the importance of this. And I could have, as councillor, like been much more of an advocate, but I didn't, I didn't think this would be controversial. I mean, it was literally like changing loading zones by two hours. That I just thought like, you know, one of the few evenings that I don't have to sit on this meeting, it'll be fine. Well, learning lesson for me, it was not fine and it failed. And I feel terr, I still feel terrible about that to my constituents and to the business owners that I worked with on that because I could have done more and I, I just didn't think, I didn't think that it would be controversial. And so, so sometimes that happens too, right? Where like, okay, I gotta pay more attention to these specific things and, you know, that's part of the pressure of the job is that I really, I, you know, I, I take that to heart, I care so deeply. And like, so everything in my ward, like every, you know, every rezone, every historic commission project and like, I really try and follow it so that I can, I, I feel like I'm being responsive to my constituents.
So as you come to the end of your term and you kind of step back and you're looking at your career in government and service to Somerville, any sort of closing thoughts or high level, kind of like gratitude or things you're glad you did or takeaways that you're, you're feeling as you, in this?
Oh, well, I'm not ending my time, my service to Somerville, I'll say that. I may be ending my elected office position for now. You know, it's, this is the, the right moment to step away and focus on my family. You know, I think new ideas, new energy is always a good thing. So, you know, and I'm supporting someone in, in the seat, her name's Emily Hart, and I'm excited about, about her candidacy for the, for the position. You know, looking back on three and a half years, I will say I have immense gratitude for the people of the city and of the ward and the city staff that I've gotten to work side by side with. We've done some really interesting, fun, you know, innovative things. And we were, you know, Clarendon Hill redevelopment, securing funding there was a big win, you know, and was one of those, I didn't take that for granted. I fought for every vote that night because, because the, because not fighting for every vote would be devastating. And I, you know, you just never know, right? And so like I worked really hard to make sure that vote passed unanimously. I wanted them to know the city supported this redevelopment. You know, getting, getting language access as a, and language justice as a priority of the city has meant real dollars back to the immigrant services office, which like is incredible to me. You know, we cut the ribbon on the West Somerville Neighborhood School, School Yard, which we, my son and I go to all the time on the weekends. But it's beautiful and it's something, you know, like impacted these families so deeply in the ward. And that was something that was working, being worked on before I was even running for office, but pushing that forward and making sure we had, you know, like eyes on it, we got, you know, we got the, the, the date to get it open that got communicated out. Like those were pieces that I was able to be a part of. The reconstruction projects, Holland, West Broadway, that's now, the design is, is done and the construction is starting on West Broadway, I think like next week. You know, that was years long of community engagement process that I worked directly with mobility to make sure, you know, we can't just host these meetings at the West Somerville Neighborhood School, you gotta go to the Clarendon Hill Towers. Like you gotta go there, you gotta go talk to people who tell me all the time how hard it is to cross over Broadway to get stop and shop. Like hear directly from them, what are the challenges and what do they want and need? And it's, and like we, I got mobility to do that. We did walk and talks, we, we sat on park benches, like really shifting and changing the way in which we engage with residents, at least for the projects that I could be a part of, was really important. But, you know, I, I have a lot of gratitude and, and I'm excited to see where, where things go and I'm gonna stay engaged. We're staying in Somerville, we're moving, but we're staying in Somerville because I love the city and I'm committed to the city and I'm not going anywhere, you know, this gives me a little bit more time and space to think about what's next. And there's some really interesting boards and commissions to think about, you know, in Somerville that have a big impact in our city in the future. And, you know, give me just more opportunities to be involved at the, at the kind of advocate activist level, which I'm really excited about.
Cool, awesome. Well, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you so much for the interview.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for the good questions.
Yeah, my pleasure.